So, good evening. Pat, you want me to wait?
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, October 8th, 2020. The time is 6:02 PM. This is a public hearing, and therefore, we have a public hearing agenda. And it's before the Board of County Commissioners and attending our Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. And what I'm going to do, ask our forthcoming potential new Sheriff, Bob Norris, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Vote.
Can't hear you. Raise your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then. So, polling for potential conflicts of interest, any? None? Okay, moving forward. So, this is a public hearing, and with a potential action item. And by that, we mean that the Board of County Commissioners can be making a decision as to whether to accept, reject, or modify the ordinance. So, this is case number O R A, short for ordinance amendment 20-0001, reentry center standards request by Cootney County to amend the Cootney County Land Use and Development Code. Title A, Cootney Code, as follows. I'm not going to read the rest of the code. But before we go any further, I'm going to turn it over to Director David Callahan, and let him make a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. This item actually started on December 5th of last year, when you, the Board, authorized us to begin. The staff rolled out a prototype to our planning commission. We worked regularly with the planning commission over a series of workshops to get the ordinance ready to go for a public hearing, which the planning commission heard on August 27th. At that hearing, there was good attendance. There were a number of people that had some, I thought, good ideas. The planning commission adopted a number of those. And you have seen, I hope, in my little memo to you, which is on the screen to my right, a synopsis of that. And then, following, there's actually a grid where you can track each item in the code, how the planning commission reviewed it, whether they took it as proposed, or if they made changes. And then, there's an explanation of who voted, how, and why. So, you can actually get a sense for if there was dissent, why. I will just say, because it's not necessarily readily apparent to those people that don't deal with these kinds of codes every day, that this is a very limiting approach. If you notice, in the beginning, it's only allowed in commercial, mining, and light industrial districts, which, if you're not familiar with our zoning map, those are the least numerous in the county. We don't have many of them, for starters. And then, you start to add on the other layers of limits here, like the facility has to be at least one half a mile away from any residential uses, along with a half mile from duplexes, parks, churches, and schools, childcare. And then, another limiting factor is it can't be near any residential zones, which would be the ag, can't be within a half mile, I mean, which would be the ag restricted residential, high-density residential, or agricultural suburban. Those last four I just mentioned are most of the county. So, you back off a half a mile from all of those areas, and all those other things I just said, I frankly will be surprised if there's more than a handful of lots in the entire county that work for a use like this. And then, of course, there has to be a willing seller, because I dare say that even the state wouldn't try condemnation on this sort of thing. So, that's, to me, one of the important aspects of this, is that this sets up a set of rules by which we would process any future reentry center. But it's a difficult test. And of course, as you know, through a CUP process, there's no guarantee that it's going to be approved. It has to meet the criteria. We have to decide, you have to decide, that it ultimately is a good neighbor. That's all that I had, unless you have questions for me.
I have none.
And I can pull up the ordinance on the screen if you need to look at it.
Okay. For the benefit of everyone attending, the reason we went down this path, and people have cornered me on it, and I suspect they might have also asked both Leslie and Bill, why are we doing this? If the proposal came before us with a petition, and we had nothing in our ordinances, and decided that we simply didn't like it and rejected it, it could potentially go to court, and it could be ruled capricious and arbitrary. So, we had to come up with a series of parameters against which we could measure such a petition. And that's what led to this effort, and what you now see before you. Pat, would you like to comment on that? By the way, this is Pat Braden, Deputy Civil Prosecuting Attorney.
Just wanted to emphasize that this is not an endorsement of these facilities, nor is it an outright rejection. I think there are several, you know, the standards for these facilities were meant to be, were worded in a way that they're meant to be tough to meet. And so, basically saying, state, we really don't like, you know, we really don't like these, but we'll give you a shot, but you got to have a, you better have a damn good plan, and a damn good proposal. And I think this accomplishes this. I think we had some good testimony at the planning commission level, and that led to some good changes that we incorporated into the ordinance that's before you tonight. So, I would just listen to the testimony and deliberate with those things in mind.
Absolutely. Thank you, Pat. I just want to make a couple of introductions. To your right, our timekeeper, Kathy Ford. Kathy works in community development. For David Callahan, to your left, Nancy Jones, our communications manager. She runs our Facebook, makes sure that our, the information that you need to see and hear and read is readily available. So, thank you both. And of course, you just met Pat. So, and Betsy Anderson, right there, also works for David Callahan in community development. So, David, would you like to start us off?
Oh, well, I think you're ready to roll.
We are? Okay.
The only other thing I will say is that, because I think I glossed over it, Pat mentioned it some, while we are naked, if you will, under the Land Use and Development Code, in my view, the state could do what it has done in other communities, which is buy land, install it, and we can't stop it. We don't even have a say. And so, this at least gives us a tool to say, you have to go through a process.
Good point. Thank you. So, I guess at that, or at this point, we can proceed to public comment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Leslie, please.
All right. Jim Strenz, neutral, may wish to speak?
I'd prefer Doug Okoniewicz.
Okay, in favor, wishes to speak. Come on up, Doug.
Name and address?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Doug Okoniewicz, O K U N I E W I C Z, 2519 West Berkeley Lane, Hayden, Idaho. First of all, I want to thank Planning and Zoning, they did a great job. They worked diligently on this. I know they were plagued by the, all the interruptions due to the COVID shutdown and whatnot, but I think they've come up with a good product. I think you've covered really everything that I was thinking I might talk about. You all obviously have a different job than those of us in the public, and that, one of them is to stay neutral and impartial. My feeling about this code, because I don't, I'm not burdened by that, is that unlike what we have today, which Mr. Callahan, I think, very succinctly just stated, where they can come in and do whatever they want at this point, what we have now is the ability for, if it's adopted, for you folks to ultimately say no. You have that option now, where you don't today. So, if this passes, you will have that option. If you think it's in the best interest of the community, and you vote for it, you can do that, too. I think, based on the advisory vote, I suspect that you wouldn't go that way, but I don't expect you to respond to that. By the way, that was genius, and for all of you, thanks for doing that. I think that was extremely helpful to get a precise feel for what the community really thinks about the reentry center. There was one thing I had that I mentioned in Planning and Zoning. I don't think it's worth messing with. I thought maybe a slightly more specific, or broad, I mean, slightly broader definition would help encompass things like, you may have seen in the newspaper recently, their mention of a geo center doing some hiring. And we're getting some terminology confusion. You know, they refer to themselves as a reentry center. You know, the difference between what we're talking about with tonight's code change and that, and I understand it, is the geo folks are dealing with people who have actually been released from prison, and the criminal reentry centers that we're dealing with, they haven't been released. They're still prisoners. So, clearly, you know, there are facilities that are needed to help folks who are out, and they're here, and I get all that. Whether or not you all think it's in your best interest to have a conditional use permitting process for those as well, I leave that to your good judgment. But that had something to do with why I thought we might be better served with a broader definition, something more like correctional facility, and then narrow it down to reentry centers, and wherever else you felt would be appropriate. But frankly, I think if this is adopted as is, we're where we need to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Doug? None? Okay. Thank you so much.
Jim?
My name is Jim Strenz, and need my address?
Yes, please.
1447 Pebblestone Court, Hayden, Idaho, 83835. I've lived in Hayden for 15 years, and have seen a lot of great things, especially from our local governments, our police departments. I'd like to compliment the commission for your diligence, for your responsibilities, and your dedication to the residents of this county. I, for one, would recommend that you vote to modify the county code 8.9.402, and at least add the reentry facility as a condition, if not more broad. That way, you have a voice for us, whether it's yes or no. You are our voice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Barbara Nelson, would you like to speak? Okay. Ditto works.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Come on up.
My name is Barbara Nelson.
Just pull the mic down.
My name is Barbara Nelson.
It's flexible. You can pull it down, so you're more comfortable. There you go.
It's nice to be here with you, because I see your pictures, and I've ran into some of you now and then, but, you know, you wouldn't recognize me except, Bill. Anyway, my name is Barbara Nelson. I live at 1660 East Pebblestone Court in Forest Hills in Hayden Lake. And the reason I'm here also is I totally believe in what Jim Strenz relayed to you. I don't have anything written down with my thoughts, and I apologize. And I'm not in favor of the reentry center, just like 9,000 people I've talked to on Doug Okoniewicz's campaign. And that's just in the months that I've called. So, I haven't reached everybody, but I do know they want you, as our county commissioners. To make a long story short, I do not believe in the reentry center, period. I have been connected with Dee Jamison and a lot of people who go on to Boise, and he is the head of the real estate. He was appointed by Butch Otter for our state. And him and I have conversed, and he was instructing me that this is the only place, they're tired of taking everything in Boise. This is the instructions that I heard from them up there. And so, now, it's our turn here in this Cootney County to start taking some of the things that they don't want anymore, that they've already implemented. But I'm still one of those, sir, that do not want the reentry center here. And if it's possible that you can at least do permits, or however you operate, to just make it a little bit more difficult, or that you have more, like they said, be able to decide where, or approve where it's going to be put, if it's here, that you have some kind of control, because that's what you're there for. You're there for us. I can say all I want on the telephone with everybody, but you're the end result. So, you're really that important to us. You really mean something to us. You have to know that. There are not a lot of people here, but everybody I talk to has faith in you, and they're voting for you. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, anybody on Zoom?
Actually, I'm the only person on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm flabbergasted, but that's fine.
Nancy, are you on the phone? Oh, who's on the phone? Somebody who's shy. Okay, we're about to end public testimony. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
All right. I move we end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
I second the motion. Bill?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
John Filios?
Aye, entering into deliberations.
Just two. One is maybe an addition, and the other one is just a question. Pat, on section K underneath section four, it talks about a narrative shall be submitted, which includes conceptual security plan, also addresses transportation, monitoring of offenders. So, if we were to add language that says that required transportation to public transit, if public transit's more than a half mile away, is that substantive? Would we have to go through the 30-day process again? Or could we add that? Because they already have to tell us what their plans are.
Let me think on that for just a second. I'm just, I'm looking at...
You can think on that, and I have a question.
Are you looking at K? Are you in K?
Yes, uh-huh.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, I guess that would be...
That's one.
Or I don't even know if it would be under that section. It could be under the, you know, where they have to be half a mile from this and half a mile from that.
That's what I'm looking for.
I suppose you could put it under section F, maybe? So, while you think about that.
That would be, that would be F, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, your other point?
Yeah, my other point is under section P, David. And it says, "Reentry facility shall be owned and operated by the State of Idaho. Privately owned or operated reentry facilities are prohibited, even if funded by or under contract of State of Idaho." I'm just curious, because there's a lot of correction-owned but privately operated places around the country. So, I'm just curious as to why.
Trust. My sense of it was the public and the planning commission felt that they didn't trust anything beyond the state to operate this.
See, I kind of feel differently. I feel like if the state comes in here and operates poorly, we got nothing, can't go back on them. But if it's a private-owned thing, then they can get their contract removed.
Which actually happened with the private prison down south of Boise. So, I really don't think you're going to see any type of correctional facility operated by anybody other than the State of Idaho in the foreseeable future.
Yeah. And plus, there's been quite a bit of publicity regarding privately-run facilities.
Right, yeah.
And there's been a lot of issues.
The trend's been going, nationwide has been going away from that, as well as in Idaho. So, on the other one, I'm looking, I'm kind of looking at that section as a whole to see.
Are you looking at K or F?
I'm looking at, like I said, I'm looking at the section at the whole.
Okay.
As all the sub...
Section four.
I'm just trying to see where it might fit, more than anything.
Try, try under F? Because it does get into the question of distance.
Right. Yeah, that's...
No?
Well, it's a capacity, it has a capacity requirement, and a, and a buffer requirement from various uses that would not be considered compatible with that kind of facility.
It could just be its own newsletter.
Oh, just because, then would that be substantive, though?
Right. I'm, I'm thinking it probably would be. Actually, well...
Well, what we could do is, if you're comfortable with it, you could, or you could approve this today, we could start an backup amendment.
Yeah, I'd rather.
And circle back around. That way, you have something on the books right now.
Yeah, because I don't want to hold it up from today. The whole reason why I mentioned this is because if you do have this situation where they are a half a mile from any of the uses, a school, a residence, whatever, and then you have the group and the bus stop, the public transportation is on the other side of it, then they could be walking a mile to get it, and they would be walking right past residential schools or whatever. So, if we have that requirement in there where they have to actually, the facility must take them to the bus stop if it's more than a half a mile from the, from the facility. That's why I thought about that.
Suppose if you could, if you could say, you know, address, also addresses transportation and monitoring of offenders, including transportation to and from, you know, employment or services, or including public, you know...
Where are you?
I'm just trying, K.
Oh.
I'm just trying to think of...
Well, if...
Something, just trying to relate that to what's already in there regarding transportation.
Well, if it's a substantive change, we don't need to spend any more time on it. We'll approve this, and then we can put it forward if one or the other agrees, that that might be a good thing to add.
Yeah, I'm, because it wasn't specifically addressed in here, I do think it would be a material change to the recommendation. Not a big one, but, but I think big enough to warrant another hearing, if that were the desire of the, of the board. But I think in, in the same, you know, in the same breath, I would, I would say, you know, the, their plan, you know, it says it has to address transportation monitoring of offenders, and I can tell you, you know, at my drafting level, staff level, planning commission level, there was a lot of talk about making sure that there was adequate transportation for offenders to their jobs, medical appointments, you know, counseling, it's, you know, the types of things that people that would be on probation or parole would normally, would normally have to arrange for, you know, and given these people aren't yet on parole, but they're at that last step before they would go on parole, those types, those types of considerations. those types of considerations, you know, really should be adequately addressed in order for any, this application of this type to be approved. So...
So with all that, you say it's a good idea or a bad idea?
You're saying it's a material change?
It would be a material, it would be a material change.
But as the merit to it, you find it's...
I think it has merit, yeah.
Okay. That's, that's good.
Sorry, I didn't, didn't mean to not try to, you know...
But with a change like that, we can even take that up at a Thursday morning session.
You could continue the discussion, and if you have two votes, authorize us to do an amendment.
Right. So we approve it tonight, and then an amendment would come forth down the proper channels to add that extra thing in.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could do a follow-on amendment. That would still have to go through the planning commission.
Sure.
So then essentially, we would be approving, or I assume we would be approving as presented, as is currently written?
Yes.
Bill, any thoughts?
Well, this whole thing, I don't know in the history of any, any time I've been associated with anything political, I've never seen 78% of people, over 78, vote one way. And this is not Republicans or Democrats, this is a community. And what they're saying is no, no, and hell no. And I think that's pretty clear. Now, if this ordinance does that, okay.
Pat, a legal question. So when you're talking conditional use permit process, doesn't the weight of the community actually hold a little bit more weight in this kind of process?
Well, as a, as a board, you're, you, that, that's kind of where the board in acting in its quasi-judicial function would be akin to a jury. You would, you would find that as a fact if, if you believe that to be true. I mean, certainly, the board can, and sure often does, you know, gauge the sentiment of the public in terms of, you know, whether, you know, whether to approve or deny a particular application. I can think of one just recently where, you know, public input and sentiment had a, had a, was a factor in the decision that was made. So I can tell you that that is, that is certainly, you know, can be and often is a factor in these types of things, especially highly controversial ones. And of course, one of the findings for conditional use permit is that it has to be compatible with the comprehensive plan. And you can, you can find that a particular application is or is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And that's one of the factors I think you would look at. Certainly, you know, a public interest finding would be, that would, that would bear greatly on that type of a finding as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman Philios?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello? Can you hear me? This is Mary Shaw, I'm the planning manager.
Oh, yeah, Mary, go right ahead.
I'd like to share a concern with you and the commissioners. I have been logged in on Zoom to join this meeting since 5:40 PM, and my screen shows that we are still waiting for the host to start this meeting.
Uh-oh.
I believe that you have closed public testimony, but I'm concerned that there may be other people waiting to test, to provide testimony, testify, and they may be experiencing the same thing that I am experiencing. So I just wanted to bring that forward before a motion is made.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm not sure how Director Callahan wants to...
He's, he's checking it. He's fixing.
I called in on my phone so that I could hear the proceedings, because I was not able to log in by the Zoom meeting.
Thanks, Mary. Go ahead, David.
I'm just checking my dates and, oh, I see what happened. Zoom automatically pulls up what it thinks should be your next hearing, and I just assumed it got the right thing. You see the blue on the screen?
Yep.
So this is user error, and it's my fault. So let me just open up the actual tonight's hearing.
Yeah.
I think you passed it.
I think that was it.
That's what I understood.
No. It was, it was like the third one down from where you were. There you go.
There it is.
See if we can get Mary on there.
We have a number of Zoom people. You could entertain the idea of reopening the hearing.
Mary, I think, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to hang up the phone.
Hang up the phone. Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm actually glad you did, but interestingly, there's still no one trying to...
There's no one else, yeah.
It may, it may be that they all just gave up.
Fine.
I hope not.
But you can blame that one on me. It's user error. I started the wrong Zoom.
Okay, then. So no one else?
There's no one else at the moment.
We'll proceed, then?
You have four watching? Is there any way to send them a message to say, was anybody on Zoom? Okay.
You can use the chat function on Zoom to do that.
Or, well, her case, YouTube.
Yeah, or comment function on YouTube.
While we're waiting, Mary, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
When you were logged in, could you see if anyone else was trying to get in?
I could not.
Okay. Thank you.
I could only see my own login.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Well, Mary, we literally have four people in the audience, so maybe people are doing something other than Zooming with us tonight.
Yes, right. I want to make sure everyone had an opportunity to provide testimony.
I'm grateful. Thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Nancy, anything? Should we proceed?
I think this is a legal call more than a planning call. Pat, are you comfortable that we've had a public hearing properly held?
In this case, yes. I can picture cases where I would recommend continuing the proceedings, but I don't, I don't think that's necessary here. It can be done, but I don't think it's necessary.
I'm fine with the opinion.
I'm fine.
Okay, then. Since it appears we've concluded deliberations, any other thoughts? I'm pretty much fine with it as presented. Motion?
Do I have a second to send the half-mile requirement?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Bill? Well, you have a second and a third.
Okay. Do I need to put that in my motion? Are we okay with just approving it?
You know, as long as your motion says as presented, I think that's fine.
Okay. I move that we approve case number ORA 20-0001 for the reentry center standards be approved as presented.
I second the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion is carried. Case number ORA 20-001 is hereby approved. Public comment? We've already had that, right?
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. The time is now 6:35. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you again.